Everyone, welcome to our meeting. We'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. (inaudible) 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 I'm supposed to remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are available at the end on their just past Commissioner Karski. Carol has listening devices this morning. If anyone needs any listening devices, she's sitting over to my right. And we are going to start the meeting today with some recognitions. And so I would, I'm going to come forward. We're going to recognize Employees of the Year for Service Honored by the South Dakota Association of Counties. So if you're here, I'm going to welcome you to come forward. And then we have a special award for the County Loss Control and Safety Achievement Awards. (inaudible) 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 Congratulations. Thank you very much. Forty years. (inaudible) 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 Okay, that takes us back to our regular agenda, routine business. I'd consider a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Now I take a motion to approve the minutes from September 26th. As you remember, a week ago, we had three meetings. So I'd consider a motion to approve the commission meeting, the joint meeting between Minnehaha County and the City of Sioux Falls, and the joint tri-meeting, Minnehaha, City of Sioux Falls, and Lincoln County.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
(noise) Thank you. Bills to be paid in the amount of $292,215.61.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would just point out that we had three funerals that we paid for as a county this time. And there's also a number of pretty large bills for legal services, court-appointed attorneys.
Okay. Anything else? Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Reports, there are none. That takes us to personnel actions. While Carrie Deaver is coming forward, I'd consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
That's my motion, second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Carrie?
Good morning. I have the following significant employee anniversaries for October 2017. We have three people celebrating five years of service. Jason Koystenin at the Public Defender's Office, Stacy Peters at the museum, and Joshua Hellman at Planning. We also have Sandra Wardell in Facilities celebrating ten years of service, and Stephen Lambert's at the jail celebrating 15.
All right. Thank you.
Then for the last item, I have to record the volunteers in the county department for September 2017, 264 volunteers. I'm surprised to see us always in this 250 to 300 individuals helping the county each month. It's fantastic.
It always is very impressive to see that long list. So we appreciate all that help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to notices and requests. There's a notice of an MPO Citizens Advisory Committee opening. There's notices from Mapleton Township of set speed limits for the following resolutions that are posted. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I believe that there are some from Mapleton Township present, so maybe they want to say something.
Is there anybody? Yes, sir.
My name is Jim Reeve, and I'm the Mapleton Township Clerk. I'm here to answer any questions you might have regarding our resolutions that are before you today.
Are there any questions? If not, we appreciate you coming very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is item eight, planning and zoning notices. There are none. Excuse me, that takes us to item nine, petition for compromise of lien.
Good morning, Melinda Storey, Commission Assistant. Before use DPNO 6220 in the amount of $2,541.88. The petitioner is applying for emergency mobile home repair through Sioux Falls Community Development and needs to meet some criteria regarding debt. He is requesting to release the lien in full with no payment. He claims in his narrative that he's unable to afford to make payments on the lien as he receives only $5,808 per year in social security and only $270 a month SSI funds. His home is valued at $4,252, and his total assets equal $6,602, and liabilities total $540. The individual is here to answer any questions for you.
Okay. If the applicant would like to speak, you can do so from where you're sitting. You just need to speak up. You do not need to identify yourself.
Well, I'm having a very desperate situation. I have a bad water heater, and it's been leaking for, I don't know how long, but it's ruined both of my bedrooms, partial rug and flooring. You should see it, it's just a mess, and I'm without water. It's just a nightmare. I can't afford a new water heater, but it's just awful.
Are there any questions for the applicant or discussion? Commissioner Karski?
So the way I understand the process, and I think this is more for you, Melinda, community development is willing to lend him the money for the improvement to his home, but he can't have a county lien to get that money.
That's correct.
Okay, so the purpose of compromising this is so he can get the help he needs.
So he can receive assistance to repair his mobile home. Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll make the motion to compromise in full.
Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, that's opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda?
Madam Chair, I just would like to make a comment for those watching, that a couple of our commissioners are gone today on other business. And with only three of us here, we have to act with unanimity, as it requires three votes to accomplish any task.
Okay, thank you. So we all better be in marching step today, huh?
That's right.
Okay. All right, I don't believe there's any other public comment this morning. And so that would take us to regular business, item 10. We've been asked to issue a proclamation recognizing October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Minnehaha County. I believe Amy Carter is here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
In the past, we have read the proclamation. Is that what you would like me to do this morning?
Absolutely, that'd be great, thank you.
Okay. Whereas, over four million women are victims of severe assault by their intimate partners annually in the United States, and nearly one in four women are likely to be abused by a partner in her lifetime. And whereas, children who grow up in violent homes are abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average. And whereas, in 2016, the Sioux Falls Police Department and the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office responded to a total of 1,394 domestic assault calls and 613 protection order violations. And whereas, in 2015, 44% of the murders in South Dakota were a result of domestic violence. And whereas, a dedicated group of citizens have been fighting domestic violence together through the Minnehaha County Family Violence Council for 35 years. And whereas, wearing a purple ribbon during the month of October and attending Take Back the Night on October 12, 2017, at 6:00 PM at the Elmond Center on the campus of Augustana University will show support for victims and survivors of domestic violence. And whereas, the voices of victims offer us important insight into the personal pain and loss that victims of domestic violence endure, and are voices that deserve our attention, respect, and support. Now therefore, we, the Minnehaha County Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to become actively involved to work toward improving victim's safety and holding perpetrators of domestic abuse accountable for their actions against individual victims and our society as a whole.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Amy?
I'd make a motion to issue that proclamation, and I would have a comment, I guess.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Barth?
You know, these issues seldom rise to the point where an incident receives public attention. Last year, when we did the Take Back the Night March, there had just been some horrific, horrific occurrences. And yet, again, stuff is happening daily where, you know, ho-hum, it's just another day. And I would point out, is it the 12th that we have Take Back the Night March this year?
Correct, October 12th.
And I hope to be in attendance, but, you know, let's keep our awareness up there, and let's not let it be smoothed over by the fact that it's not been as bad as the shooting in Vegas. I mean, anyway, that's my comment.
Any other comments? There's been a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We thank you. You guys do really tough work out there, and I know you've been dealing with record numbers. And so we really appreciate the work that you do and the attention that you're bringing to this very important issue.
Well, thank you for your continued support of the issue, and from both advocate perspective and, of course, the law enforcement side as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to item 11, and now we're issuing...
We don't have our person here for, and I think he was bringing some guests along. So if I could ask to have that just moved to the end?
Okay.
If that would work for the...
I believe so.
For the recognition of National Four each week.
Okay, so we'll just come back to item 11. Takes us to item 12. Consider a motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign the 2018 to 2022 Transportation and Bridge Improvement Plan. D.J. Boothey.
Morning, Commissioners. D.J. Boothey, Highway Superintendent. Every year, as part of our county budget process, the Highway Department completes the long-range plan. Most counties do a four-year long-range plan at the county, and because of the requirements of some improvement grant funding through the state, the Highway Department completes a five-year plan. And so throughout our budgeting process, you heard a lot of discussion about our construction projects for the next five years. The approval today is basically taking that information that we put together during our county budgeting process and reformatting it into the requirements that the state has for their bridge improvement grant process. It's the same projects, it's the same information that we developed for our budgeting process. Like I said, just formatted in the state's format and allowing us to apply for grant funding through the bridge improvement grant program if we choose to do that. Along with the requirements, we were required to hold a public meeting, our open house, on this information. We sent out over 150 invitations. This year, our attendance was down just a little bit. We went from, I think, seven to three. And so that's not counting our county staff that attended the meeting, but there's not a lot of people that are attending our public meetings, and so we're going to look at different ways to try to reach out and engage people for next year. But with that being said, we're requesting the certification and approval of our 2018 to 2022 Transportation and Bridge Improvement Plan.
Are there any questions for D.J.?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, could I make a small comment?
Yes.
It seems like when there are no public meetings, there's a clamor to, why aren't we having public meetings? And when we do have public meetings, nobody comes, so it's irritating.
Well, we appreciate the three people that did come, because it sounded like you guys had a pretty robust discussion just with three people, so...
It was great. And actually, the small group discussion probably for those three individuals was a lot better than if we had 100 people there. I mean, I think they got a lot out of it. So the townships that were present, I think, really enjoyed that time together.
Okay. That takes us to item 13. Consider a motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign Highway Construction Change Order CC0 Number One. D.J. Boothey.
Commissioners, every year in the fall, we do a crack seal project. Asphalt roads crack, and in order to prevent them from deteriorating really quickly, you have to fill those cracks. And so in the fall, we do a rough estimate of how many miles we have that are going to require crack seal repairs. And the way that it's done in the industry is you estimate almost an arbitrary amount of material per mile that you're going to need. And this year, it just so happens that we needed more material than that arbitrary amount. And so we ended up increasing our quantities a bit there. They had six and a quarter miles left this spring to perform the crack seal on, and so it ends up being $70,586.10 higher than what our original contract was. So the nice thing about this contract and this change order is we're extending the unit prices that we already have in place through our contract, and so we don't have to go through any kind of a negotiation or a new contract. Our bid process allows us to just extend the unit prices. So with that, I would request your approval signing the change order number one for this crack seal project.
Are there any questions for D.J.? Commissioner Karski?
Just to clarify, D.J., the work's being done by your department people, correct?
No. No, this work is being done by a contractor.
Okay. So the extra $70,586.10 is purely material cost, has nothing to do with the contract cost?
That's the contract cost, and that's his unit price, and that would cover his labor and material.
So it is the entire contract.
Right.
So we estimated 245.810 originally to get the job done. Yeah, okay. Is that, what am I missing? We had a contract for, to do so many miles, and we estimated short?
We estimated short approximately 6.25 miles. After the snowmelt in the spring, there were additional cracks that weren't as bad in the fall, and so we decided that it would be best to fill those. And then there were additional miles in the spring, or in the fall, when we did the original work, that there were more cracks in the roadway that there were during the initial inspection, and so more material had been used.
And if you said that, I apologize. That's what I was trying to get to the bottom of, how did we end up that short? Because it's 25% or so of the total contract, so it was simply because the condition of the road when we initially estimated was worse after the estimate was done.
Exactly, right. And so the way that this contract is paid out, the contractors, it's called Highway Improvements. We pay them per pound of crack sealing material, and so it's literally a box of rubberized mastic material that they put into a hopper that heats it up, and then they pour the hot rubber into the cracks. And so if your crack is a half an inch wide, you use a certain amount of rubberized material. If it's one inch wide, you use twice as much material. And so we can count the number of cracks per mile, and we can make a pretty fair estimate, but we certainly don't go out there and measure the width of every single crack, because those cracks, they move with the temperature. And so if you do it when the temperature is 40 degrees, you're going to use a different amount of material than if you did it when it was 30 degrees or 50 degrees. And so there's standardized numbers, and I don't know them off the top of my head, but per mile, if you have a certain number of cracks, you should estimate this much material. And so the units that you actually use, the number of pounds that you actually use during construction, oftentimes with a crack sealing project, vary greatly with what you had planned.
And the money, the additional $70,000's available in your highway funds?
Absolutely.
Okay. Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, so you get to stay up here, Mr. Boothey. The next item is consider a motion to declare the 1998 Dodge Ram 3,500 pickup as surplus and authorize Highway Department to sell to the City of Humboldt for $1,500.
So moved. Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
That was easy.
Item 15. Consider a motion to authorize the Highway Department to purchase a two-disc mowers. D.J. Boothey.
Commissioners, over the last few years, mowing has been kind of a hot topic with our Highway Department. It's a work item that we just know that there's a level of service that's better than what we've provided in the past. We want to do as best as we can, and so we've changed the types of mowers that we've used. We've changed the number of mowers that we use over the years. And most recently, I think, three years ago in 2014, we purchased a mower for just over $40,000. That was supposed to be the cat's meow and do a wonderful job for us. It's not necessarily the right application for what we're doing today, and so through a lot of conversations with different vendors, we're looking at purchasing two separate mowers at a lower cost and getting those out on the road to try to provide a better level of service for the traveling public. The total cost, we got a couple different quotes for these items. The total cost is $23,325, and it's for two disc mowers. The two disc mowers would be implemented for the 2018 mowing season. This is not something that we had budgeted for this year. It's certainly something that we can afford to purchase this year. And then after the 2017 mowing season, we would look at surplusing and selling our existing mower that we purchased three years ago. And it appears that the market for that is right around $25,000 to $30,000 right now, or $20,000 to $30,000. And so we think this will be basically a fair trade. When all is said and done, we won't be spending any actual dollars out of our budget once the surplus money comes back. So if you have any questions, I can answer them about our existing procedures or policies with our mowing or with the proposed procedures that we're looking at with these disc mowers. I can answer them now.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So, D.J., don't we allow landowners to mow near their property along the road and stuff?
Yes, and that's on, we don't have a program that we've established on a regular basis. We don't send out information, but we do receive several requests from landowners throughout our 350 miles of roadway. And so if somebody wants to mow and bale that grass, we certainly allow it. And then oftentimes, we won't spray or we'll spray certain chemicals in those areas. I wish that landowners would mow all of the ditches on all of our roads, but some of them just don't want to.
A comment, I guess, is when I lived in Brussels, Belgium, at the airport there, they had shepherds with a flock and a dog that kept the grass down at the airport. So instead of mowing, they used it for animal husbandry.
Any other comments? Mr. Karski?
I don't think we're ready for a flock of sheep yet, but that's an interesting perspective. D.J., we have one mower right now, is that correct, that we use?
We have multiple mowers, but we have one as a main mower that will be replaced by these two mowers.
Okay, and that was my question. Okay, thank you. Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I have been advised by the smarter people around me that we need to go back and revisit item 14, that we need to clarify where we would like the proceeds from the sale of the Dodge Ram deposited, either in the Highway Fund or the General Fund. So I'd need a separate motion on that item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Go ahead.
I was going to make the motion that the funds be deposited into the Highway Department Fund.
It died for lack of a second.
(laughing)
I would make a motion that we put it in the General Fund.
You know, we always could defer this until Commissioner Bennin goes back.
It appears that that may be what we need to do at this point. So we will bring that item back next week when we have a full commission and decide the weighty question of where that $1,500 should go.
We need a motion to make that deferral.
That's what I suggest.
That's my motion to defer action till next week on where to put those funds.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to item sixteen. We've been asked to authorize the chair to sign an amendment to the Air Guard Security Protection Agreement between Minnehaha County, the State of South Dakota Department of Military. Keith Winia, hi.
Morning, Commissioners. Keith Winia, Air Guard Division Supervisor. This amendment to the agreement recognizes the additional funding of the agreement, one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars on top of what previously what they funded us. So, this brings us up to a total of seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents, which covers all of our funding for operational costs for the F.Y. seventeen of the government fiscal year, so...
Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Barth?
So, was this additional fund expected?
Yep.
So, when we signed it, we knew it was, we needed more money to do the coverage, and this is the supplement that we got, right?
Right. We get projections on what the cost is going to be, and then we submit it through the government. The Air Guard does that for us.
Right.
And then, in the fourth quarter, they come around and give us the whole amount of what they owe us, so...
I'd make a motion to authorize the chair to sign this amendment.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks for coming this morning.
Thanks.
That takes us to item seventeen. Asked us to authorize the chair to sign the M.O.U. for the Sioux Falls Metropolitan Planning Organization. Scott Anderson.
Thank you. Scott Anderson, County Planning. I have submitted a memo, sort of briefly explaining the memorandum of understanding for the Sioux Falls Metropolitan Planning Organization. This is a memorandum of understanding that is signed by many entities. One of the reasons for the new updated memorandum of agreement is that Harrisburg has been added to the, as a first-class municipality, and now they're a party to the signature. I have submitted the M.O.U. to the state's attorney's office, and it was reviewed by our state's attorney, Maggie Gillespie, and she okayed it. I'd be glad to answer any questions. This did go before the U.D.C. back in, I believe, June, and we have three county commissioners on the U.D.C., and it's U three. So, I think you're familiar with the presentation that was made at that June meeting of the U.D.C. at C.C.O.G., on the MPO, all those acronyms, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. And I'm just sort of bringing this forth on behalf of C.C.O.G. It's really their agreement.
Does anybody have any questions for Scott?
Comments, if I could. You know, this is one of those organizations that really flies under the radar of what most people, you know, awareness of governance is, but it's truly a very highly needed and functional part of how things get done in our greater metropolitan area. Remind me, Scott, adding those two communities, Brandon and Harrisburg, does that add voting members to the MPO, or do we keep the same number of total? I'm trying to remember.
It does add their representative to the U.D.C. The, I'm not, I don't even know if I can remember what the acronym is for U.D.C., but...
Urbanized Development.
For the Governing, the Urbanized Development Committee, the governing portion of the MPO, they will now have...
A place at the table.
Yeah, a place at the table.
Did anybody lose one? I'm just trying to...
No.
Okay. Because I know T. paid for a separate, basically, census so that they could gain...
That's correct.
A seat at the table also, just for representation, just to give you, or, you know, information how important it is to have a seat at that table.
And for the viewing public that may not be familiar with what the MPO does, it really coordinates all of the transportation issues within the, a growth boundary of, let's say, the Sioux Falls area, and that coordinates the transportation between federal highway, state DOT, the city of Sioux Falls, our own county highway system, all of the different municipalities. So, we have a unified work program on what, on how we deal with transportation projects. And it's a requirement under federal law, when you become a statistical metropolitan area, that you are required to have an MPO that regulates and coordinates all these development projects. And so, that's the overall intent of the MPO for people that are not familiar with it. And you are correct, it's a very important element of government that is relatively not very familiar by many people, but is very important.
And if I could, just, you know...
Certainly.
With the passing of Steve Matley, Carol Tweet took over, was elected to be the chair, the citizen representative chair of that committee, so just a shout-out to her in recognition for the work and willing to shoulder that task, too. So, thank you, Carol.
Any further questions? Noted, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is item eighteen, which is to authorize the chair to sign an interim agreement with J.L.G. Architects. Carol Muller.
Good morning, Commissioner. Carol Muller, Commissioned Administrative Officer. And I think you all know we're building a jail expansion project that we're working on. And probably since we've last discussed this, we have, we're moving forward with J.L.G. on getting this process started. What with summer and vacations and different types of things with family issues, our final contract is not ready to be signed yet at this point, and that's why we're bringing forward to you an interim contract, which will just go through November one. We are planning to enter into an owner-architect agreement for the Minnehaha County Jail Expansion Project. It is valid through November one, by which time you will have already seen the final contract. I don't think you'll see it next Tuesday, because it's a three-day weekend, and we bump everything up for getting agendas together. The approval of the commission will allow the work of J.L.G. and their consultants to move forward on the jail expansion project prior to the A.I.A. agreement being finalized. One thing that's just a little bit different about this is you don't see the normal contract header that you're used to seeing on contracts, and I know that we're very strict about making sure that those are in place, and we appreciate that. This is, we have outside counsel for this that we're utilizing, and you'll notice that you have a separate letter on that, and on the back of it, he just had one change that we went through and made with J.L.G. He recommends Minnehaha County approve and execute the interim agreement. I can ask any question, answer any questions you all may have.
Is there any questions for Carol? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
That's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I think we will circle back at this time and pick up item eleven, which is to issue a proclamation recognizing October first through seventh as National Four-H Week, and declare October third, two thousand seventeen, Minnehaha County Four-H Day. Chuck, hi.
Hi. I'm Chuck Martinell, Minnehaha County Extension Office, S.S.U. Extension Four-H Program. I apologize for being a little bit late. I caught a train, so I decided not to race it. So, this week, the first week in October, is typically the National Four-H Week for the entire country. We celebrate Four-H Week while having our clubs go out and do different community service projects, and doing community awareness of Four-H as a whole. We bring forward our proclamation that we hope the county will approve. The proclamation is whereas Four-H is an educational program where members focus on learning up, learning by doing with their heads, heart, hands, and health, and whereas the Four-H Program develops critical thinking and problem-solving data, skills that are sought by the business world and its public service, and whereas Four-H develops lifelong skills, leadership, and citizenship of urban and rural youth, all of which will benefit their families, careers, and communities on a local, state, national, international level. And whereas Four-H youth are three and a half times more likely than youth in other programs to be actively involved in community service. And whereas, Minnehaha County, sorry, I lost my spot. Whereas, Minnehaha County Commission, the local partner, along with South Dakota State University, the state partner, and the United States Department of Agriculture, the national partner, encourage people in Minnehaha County to become involved with the Four-H Program, a program that was established by United States Congress in nineteen fourteen.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair, I guess I make a motion to authorize us to make that proclamation.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, so that takes us back to item nineteen, Liaison Reports. Are there any?
Madam Chair, it's next week, but I wanted to mention that the museum is having their groundbreaking for the archive facility on Thursday, the twelfth, at eleven-thirty. Honestly, the ground has already been broken, but we had to pick a date where it was convenient to bring those involved together to celebrate that, and so I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Certainly, an opportunity to have a celebration of a well-deserved, long, forthcoming project, so... Any other liaison reports? Okay, that takes us to item twenty, new business. Any new business? Old business? If not, we do not have an executive session, and I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all for coming.
Hear you're leaving?
Yep.
Is that right?
We should have recognized your...